The Citizen Mike Show. The Citizen Mike Show starts now.
Welcome to the Citizen Mike Show. Thanks for tuning in, we do appreciate it. My name is Mike Bridenski. Over there on my right is Ralph Thomaselli, the editor of the paper you read every morning, the editor of the Record Journal. Ralph, we got an excellent guest on the show.
Yes, we do.
Returning for his, I don't know, third or fourth time.
At least.
Yeah, Republican Town Councilor Chris Chortel. Chris, thank you for coming back, we appreciate it.
Number four.
Is it number four?
Wow.
Wow, all right. We got a ton of topics that we want to talk about and ask Chris about, but one of the things that's bothering a lot of people maybe most is the proposal by Eversource to cut a lot of trees around their rights-of-way underneath the transmission lines, those big, tall, big, tall transmission lines, not the distribution lines that go along the streets. So this is what's happened kind of so far. There's some meeting in front of the town council, and there's two articles in the Record Journal. One was entitled, and actually this was in the first page upper right, the most desired story.
Indeed, yes.
Spot in the newspaper. "Utilities' Tree Plan Sparks Worries." First couple sentences, "Over 100 residents were in the audience Tuesday night as Eversource Energy officials presented details of a plan to remove hundreds of trees near its transmission lines." The presentation to the town council was held to provide residents with more information about the project, said Mayor Dickinson, who requested the presentation after several residents approached him with concerns about tree trimming. And then on October 30, a little follow-up story, headlined "Town Officials Skeptical About Tree Cutting Plan." Chris, you were at the Eversource meeting, just sort of bring us up to date as to what your understanding is and where it's going to go from here.
Well, I mean, there is a lot of skepticism. I think the council was pretty united, and the mayor, well, the mayor wasn't quite as skeptical, but basically they want to clear a path along their entire easement, and that includes property worry of homeowners who have trees between them and the lines that serve as a natural barrier, and now they're seeing purple ribbons on these trees that they're going to be cut. So, I mean, it was, it was a tough meeting, I mean, because we don't have a lot of power to do anything about it. The residents were very passionate about it, and, you know, Eversource, I mean, there were components of their presentation that were, at best, nebulous and at worst, laughable.
Hmm. So. I want to get back to that laughable comment, but we got a video that I want to get to, took as we can. This is about, I don't know, it's about three minutes or so, and it's excerpts from the town council meeting. I think this discussion was over two hours, and I kind of had to pick and choose, but I wanted to get to the gravamen of it, and then we're going to come back. That first video, Bruce, let's hit that, three, two, one, go.
They're recommending the industry best practice, which is clearing your right-of-way to the full extent. You know, as I sit here, I reflect back to the railroad coming in here and giving us a similar overview, and when they were done, you know, the corporate line was, we're going to talk to people, we're going to try to make friendly with people. People aren't going to like it, so you're going to do it anyway. That's one of the concerns I have. The railroad came here, they expressed an interest in what the council felt was the best location for a train station, walked out of here knowing they were going to do what they needed to do anyway.
I think there's very limited jurisdiction, limited to the extent of none with regard to local, either planning and zoning, local land use bodies, or, you know, town government. However, I have found Eversource is interested in talking with people. I've been in attendance on a couple of occasions. I think there are efforts to be sensitive to, well, let me use an example, sensitive to dealing with a species of tree that it will grow at a height that will affect the wires, and then hopefully not be dealing with trees of a, of a species that will not grow taller. So, I think there is that sensitivity. I hope these gentlemen can confirm that that, that kind of discussion has been going on.
So, you're looking to cut back a certain distance from the lines, am I correct?
That's correct.
And what was that distance again?
It varies. We'd like to go at least 100 feet.
Well, how, am I hearing that the proper units have some sort of decision in this?
I wouldn't say they have a decision as to whether a tree that has to go can stay, that's not the decision. The question is whether or not that limit of clearing that you see, whether that's the edge of the easement, or whether that's a limit of clearing and there's more isn't beyond it. We had nine vegetation-caused outages, trees falling into our lines this year alone. In the 1990s, we were having zero. Every year, we're getting more and more, even though we're spending more and more money managing these areas, taking out more trees, hazard trees, and inspecting these more often. We inspect these lines three to four times a year. We're still having trees falling into our lines, because there's just so many of them out there. We need to get a handle on this, and this is the best way to do it. In our minds, this is the best way to do it for our customers. Based upon the species we're talking about, our intention would be to clear trees up to 100 feet from the outside conductor, yes?
Anything from one inch to any size?
That's correct.
Okay. From the one, from the 100-foot mark to the 150-foot mark, how much say do I have in that?
It depends on what we have there, sir. We'd have to take a look to see if there's any trees that would be a problem. We're only going to be taking trees that would be a problem at this time, or if it was a white pine.
Excuse me?
We're trying to target white pines.
White?
They're after white pines. Ralph, your thoughts?
Well, you know, I do have empathy for people who are told that trees near their property, or maybe even on their property, are going to be cut, and it's not a nice feeling. People have almost emotional attachments to trees. But I do feel obligated to point out that for the utility company, keep in mind that when power goes out, and we don't have a big problem with that here in Wallingford, but other areas do, when, when the power goes out, especially when you have a big power outage, people complain to the utilities that their power's out, and there's hearings held afterwards, and utility bosses have to explain why the power's out, and where their trucks were, and why they weren't there, and people lose their jobs at utility companies over mat. So, so, I understand at least where they're coming from on a precautionary basis, and I just wanted to point that out.
Chris, you used the word laughable. What were some of the soft spots in the Eversource's presentation?
Well, there were, there were two struck, struck me. The first was, just quickly, there was a picture in their packet, it was a power, I should have brought it, and it was a picture that I imagined my second grader would see in his book, his social studies book, or his geology, I don't know, whatever they have, about the dangers of deforestation, because it was this picture of cut-down trees, and it was, "We're going to leave you the firewood. They're going to leave us, they're going to leave if they want," and, and I think Craig or someone questioned them on that. He was like, "You're not even going to cut it up, and you're just going to leave it?" So that was just a little moment where you just shook your head. But their communication plan, I thought, was very, very nebulous. They, they talked about every resident was supposed to receive a letter, but then the mayor interjected. I asked that, and the mayor pointed out that not every resident had received a letter, and I just thought it was unclear where are they in this process?
Yeah.
You know, so.
Just to recap a little bit, and the source of the frustration, and actually, I'm going to digress first, there were many residents that spoke at that meeting, and there were some very excellent and passionate statements, in the interest of time. I couldn't capture them all, and we got, we got one, one comment, but it, there is a, a meeting of neighbors in our neighborhood that I went to, because we're not that far from the power line. Eversource was there, we had about 25 to 30 neighbors, the mayor was there, State Senator Len Fazano, and his assistant was there, Tom Laffin also, also showed up. It lasted about 45 minutes, and I'm going to try to, this is my interpretation, which is kind of squares with what I saw on the video. It seems to me, my interpretation, what Eversource is saying, that within 100 feet, not of the poles, but of the line, so, you don't measure from the pole, the lines have arms, you know, that expand out, you know, get a vertical, and then 100 feet out on either side of the line, there's almost an irrebuttable presumption, anything in that area is coming down, unless it's the smallest of sapling or scrub. That seems to be what they're, what they're saying. After that, 50 feet, it's more discretionary, I suppose, but I get the impression that if you're a tree 60, 70, 80 feet tall in that 100 and 150-foot out, you're doomed. But therein lies the source of the frustration, because some of the neighbors are pointing out, "Well, wait a minute, if you're a 60-foot tree, 120 feet away from the wires, why would you have to cut that tree?" And Eversource's answers seem to be, "Well, it's expedient, we want to do it all at once, we want to do it now." And they go into the speech about how much, you know, the outages, but then they come back to, "But if it's a 60-foot tree, and it isn't going to grow another, you know, maybe 20 feet, and it's 120 feet away, why would you even need to cut that?" So that's the source of the frustration. At our little community gathering, Senator Fazano, who did a very excellent job, and did I mention the mayor was there too?
Yes, he did.
Yeah, he did. Senator Fazano suggested that why don't they have a management plan, and so instead of whacking everything down at once in a scorched-earth policy on that, on that 100, 150-foot, just take the ones that true, just take down the trees that truly threaten or will threaten within five years or so, the power line, and then, you know, come back, you don't have to have the scorched-earth policy. The mayor, at that point, turned to Len and said, "Len, can you prepare some language for some sort of a policy?" Len said, "Oh, I'd be glad to," and Len is, Len Fazano is going to get some language together to submit to Eversource, to see if Eversource will bend. I don't know, but, you know, that's where, that's where it may stand. I asked the question, "What, you guys, Eversource, you've put this clearing out to bid, this tree clearing out to bid, what are in the specs? The guys coming in with their equipment and their chainsaws, maybe they just know, whack everything with 100 or 150 feet." There was some equivocation about that, but Eversource suggested that their guys would be on site to maybe save a tree here or there. You know, and this is going to happen fairly quickly, right after, I think, Thanksgiving, they might be cutting. Chris, your final thoughts on what, what to do, you know, where, where it's going to go, just your?
I mean, you're hitting it on the head, there is no plan. The plan is very, very cookie cutter, and, you know, they also cited in their, in their presentation, the 2011 snowstorm, and because there were leaves on the trees, there were lots of power outages in the New England area, but when that, when they were asked, "Well, how many of those were in Wallingford?", the answer was, "Well, none." So, the other thing, just to, one final thought is, I know Chairman Cervone did ask the Law Department to look into, because the town owns three or four parcels that are affected, can we do anything along that front?
Yeah.
So that's the only other actionable item.
To be continued. Yeah. So, a couple of weeks ago, the candidates running for office had a forum.
Right.
Yeah. The state reps running for office representing Wallingford were there, state, those running for, actually Len Fazano was not there, but I think he's running unopposed. Interesting forum, but because we did not have on this show this fall Mary Michinski.
We didn't.
Nope, not this fall.
We've had her before.
Yeah, but not, you know, during election season.
Yeah, no, you're right.
And we did not have Serge Mahaly, he was on last spring.
Yeah, right.
It's, you know, I decided to get some clips from that forum, which featured those two individuals, and a little bit of Vince Candelora, who represents a sliver of Wallingford, and he hasn't been on for a couple of years, certainly not in our election season. So, I don't really have too much comment about it, but just to give a little flavor of what happened at that, at that forum. Three, two, one, Bruce, hit that.
Couple folks on the dais today have raised the issue that we're overbonding, that we're using the credit card, the state credit card, too much. So I'd like to ask you if you agree with that, and if you do agree with that, cite one project in your hometown that if you had the power to, you would have said, "It's not, you know, we don't want the bond, the money for this."
So, I'll just say, I do think we're overbonded. In terms of projects, I just recently sat on the bond commission as a member and voted against every single project that was on there, it was over $680 million.
I agree that we should, we should stop bonding right now. If I was on the committee, I would vote the same way, would not bond. One of the things, as an example, the Oakdale Theater, they sell, sold $9.2 billion of tickets last year. They had a problem with the, the sound, and a bond brought up by, one of our representatives was for over a million dollars of a bond. We need to look into these things and make sure that it's the right thing to do, that Oakdale could, could pay for this. Government, it's not government's responsibility to get into the private sector. Private sector knows what they're doing. We lost 7,500 people. Government doesn't know how to run a business. It lost 7,500 workers. That should be evidence enough.
Ms. Michinski?
Some of the bonds really can't be done except by the state. For example, Wallingford is upgrading its sewage treatment plant to take out phosphorus. I helped get them some additional bond money to do that. Wallingford could not handle that $3.4 million in additional cost without help from the state, so it was important that I was able to get that money to the town. We did redirect existing bond money for economic development this year, we targeted it to innovation hubs, and that's a, we reused existing money. The schools have been the largest user of bond money in the past. We have to sit on them to do more regional efforts and control costs that way. And, and finally, we need to have a standard rules for, for everyone if we're going to not do athletic fields, for example. In my town, in Wallingford, Sheehan had their fields improved, and Lyman Hall didn't, so Lyman Hall had to catch up. Thank you.
Ralph, your thoughts?
Well, just to, just to clarify something, Serge Mahaly, who's running against Mayor Michinski, brings up the issue of over a million dollars as far as an Oakdale bonding request, and, and I think there may have been some requests put in, but it was withdrawn pretty quickly, I believe even by Oakdale itself, when it, you know, hit the paper, so to speak. So I just wanted to point that out, that, that bonding request went nowhere.
Yeah, there's something else I needed to clarify, thanks for bringing that up. Serge Mahaly indicated that Oakdale sold $9.2 billion worth of tickets. I had some communication with him, and I think if he had to redo the answer to that, that question, he would say that Live Nation, not just, not Oakdale, but Live Nation, which has many venues, didn't have $9.2 billion, they, he says they earned $1.2 billion in the first quarter of 2016, and $2.8 billion in the second quarter of 2016. So, it's not Oakdale, it's all of Live, of Live Nation, but, so I wanted to just catch that. We got one more video on this forum, then we're going to get back to Chris Chortel and, and feature him for the last 40 minutes or so. This question had to do with school financing, and the, the candidate seemed to assume that the question referred to that Superior Court case that we've been talking about, that ruled the way the state finances education was unconstitutional, but that really wasn't built into the question, but it sure was baked into the answer. So let's hit that last video, three, two, one, go.
Mr. Mahaly, if you were given the opportunity to change the way public schools are funded in the state of Connecticut, how would you go about it, and could you please be as specific as possible?
First of all, one of the comments I made at another debate was the fact that the judge who handed out that, handed down the decision was absolutely correct. I have over 10 years of experience as a teacher. I think it was absolutely disgraceful that you had the more wealthy towns get $5 million more than they should have, and the towns that didn't have as much money get $5 million less. That should have been caught in the beginning. As far as funding, that's not a question to just throw off the top of your head. The state of Connecticut has such a ridiculous, I looked at it, it's written in such a way that it's not supposed to be understood. It's written in such a way that it is purposely complicated, so nobody in the state government has any idea how to do it, and that's why we have this, I consider corruption in a state government. That needs to end. We need to have the, we need to have the teachers, we need to have the Board of Education, we need to have, we need to have people from outside Connecticut to sit down and say, "Wait a minute, this is unfair." We also have to do it, I think, by performance. We should take pride in the fact that if a school has good grades, that people are passing, then maybe they shouldn't get as much money. Instead of rewarding people for, for, that, that need money, we should reward people for performance, positive performance. I think everything is turned upside down. Education, as a former teacher, and I've taught in public school, Catholic school, I've also taught juvenile delinquents, I know this pretty well, and I would more than happy to go into more detail. Thank you.
Ms. Michinski, one minute, please.
Oh, the judge is right that the formula is politically crafted, and he was very observant to notice that. It is not getting us where we want to go, which is to reduce the achievement gap and in, and increase the scores and performance of kids in the neglected urban districts. He's very right about that. One of the things the state could do initially, and I have filed this bill, but it has not passed, but one of the things the state could do is to take the special ed kids off the town's responsibility and put them on state responsibility, and then change the formula so that it allows for a longer school year, more additional instruction for the schools that are behind, and, again, using performance measurements, improve the schools that need the extra help.
Mr. Candelora?
Thank you. I served about eight years on a task force under Governor Rell to look at the ECS formula, which funds our education. One of the things I think that is blatantly obvious with this formula is that it's underfunded to begin with. The state never met its obligation to provide all of the funding that it was supposed to for schools. So it's not just the cities that are struggling with funding, it's also...
You went on to say it's also, it's also the towns that are underfunded. So because these candidates weren't on the show this election season, I want to give them a little time in lieu of, you know, an appearance on the Citizen Mike Show. Chris, we haven't talked, on this show, we haven't talked about the plan of conservation development in a while. There was something called the Implementation Committee, and I think the last time it appeared, or Ralph and I talked about it many months ago. What's going on?
Well, there is a, there is a committee, and I am on it with Vice Chair Laffin, as well as representatives from the other different boards and agencies, and we were just appointed, I think, a month or two ago, I think the end of the summer, early fall, so it has not organized yet, that'll be the next step, and it's, it's a committee that, for me, it's kind of a Nixon Goes to China moment, because I was against the committee. I felt like it should be managed under the current bureaucracy of the town with the town planner, but Casey made the point that most other towns have this type of committee, so that, that convinced me. But, so it's happening, and, but I can't really tell you much more than that, because we haven't met yet as a group. I have, I certainly have thoughts about how I think it should go, but I don't know if you want to hear those, or if you want to...
We do, that's why, why don't you launch right into those?
Oh, that's what you want.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was fishing for, absolutely, yeah.
I mean, I think we need, you know, I think it needs to have some kind of, I mean, report card is too strong a word. I, this is not designed to be something that should be political, it needs to be something, though, that, that involves more than just dusting off the plan every 10 years, so it needs to be some kind of update to the public. I would envision it once a year, it's a 10-year plan, because there's so many things in town, there's things the Board of Ed might do that I wouldn't know about anymore. So it's got to be something that brings all this information together, updates the town on where it is, and lets the town, lets everyone understand how far we're progressing or not progressing. I would, personally, I would structure it, I would meet a few times in the off-budget cycle, and I would present something before the budget, because I think that's a good time to put it out there. I think it, you know, as far as who should share it, probably somebody not on the council, because our, whoever, I don't know about the other, the EDC is on there, there are people who have terms who go farther than my term or Tom's term, so I'm, maybe someone like that should lead it, because there's more stability. I mean, those are just some thoughts. Casey should obviously be a de facto member of it. You know, I don't see it meeting like once a week or once a month, I think a few times a year to get it going, and maybe, you know, it, whatever comes out of it, whatever report card or document is on the town website, and it's someone can quickly look at it and see where we are.
Any thoughts, Ralph?
Well, just in the meantime, it seems, it seems to me, what I've read about is the Planning Commission is trying in some ways to move forward with some downtown parking issues that have been kicked around for a while, including this whole idea of payment in lieu of, of parking, so that's where I see the action on the plan coming from right now, unless I've missed something.
I'm not sure that's from the plan, that would have happened anyway, and even if, even if the implementation of the POCD, Plan of Conservation Development, was totally ignored, that, I would say, meager efforts on parking would still, you know, go at a snail's pace. Remember, we've been talking about downtown parking for years and years and years, and it seems like the news is, "Another meeting scheduled," you know, or something like that. It just goes from meeting to meeting, with not, not a lot, at least that I, that I can see. Chris, a question for you, though, does this, the way this Implementation Committee has been set up, with the membership being mainly the in-crowd in government, it's mainly the establishment, it's the established committees, it's the folks that have a, you know, a stake in the mayor's budget, they're on the committee, they're, they're not, the people on the committee are not boat rockers, they're, you know, they're not seen that way, I mean, you've got to speak for yourself and, and, you know, and Tom. So, you know, I look at the makeup of the committee, this is before I learned that you and Tom are on it, and I said, "This isn't going anywhere." I mean, you know, they'll have meetings, and it'll be in the newspaper, and, you know, but as far as getting the Economic Development Commission to do something, you know, out of their comfort zone, or at a schedule that isn't there, I don't see it ever happening.
You could have a committee with 12 boat rockers, but the committee itself has no authority.
Right.
So it's really all about PR, and it's, I mean, at the end of the day, it, that's all of it, and that's why I was against it initially, and I just didn't think it had any teeth. So you're right, I mean, maybe the committee does not have a lot of boat rockers on it.
Not that that's a good...
Let's get that trending, boat rocker, hashtag boat rocker. But I, I don't, you know, I think, but I think you raise a good point, and I think that the, that this committee should be looking at, not just reacting to what's happening, so yes, Dr. Menzo is doing something with a new thing, and it maybe answers Section B of the plan, but like, parking, you know, is there a strategy around parking? Do we look at, is there a recommendation that could come out of the committee? I would hope we could do something like that. I mean, it's, it's, it's a step in the right direction. I don't believe the current plan has a committee, or had a committee, so that's, that's progress.
Yeah.
I think.
So when, when do Ralph and I diary this for? Do we diary ahead for another year, or six months? I mean, we're, you know, we're on the edge of our chairs here.
I know, this is, um...
Hasn't organized yet.
Hasn't organized yet.
Take your time.
It would take, yeah, we're, it's Wallingford, what's the, what's the...
Right, right.
I would hope, I mean, what's today, November 2nd? I, you know, I'd hope we'd, we'd meet before the end of the year, but I'm not going to bet my life on that, so, we'll see what we can do. I'll see what I can do.
Optimistic?
No.
Should we move on to Charter Revision?
Yes, yes.
Let's move on to Charter Revision. Chris, you've been sort of watching, you know, the developments on Charter Revision. Have any particular issues grabbed you, that you had some, some thoughts about?
Yeah, I mean, a couple.
Yeah.
And I think, let me just preface this by saying, I think that committee is doing a great job. To do what they, go line by line through that document, take, take up their own time, that's a thankless task. I think they're doing great, they're really moving fast, too. I think they've already had two public hearings. I think two issues struck me, that there's a similar theme of expertise, and, and in the sense that we... sense that, in one issue, they're, I don't think they're going to take action, and another issue, I think they are, but I think to me, it's the same issue. So we had recommended, the council had a bunch of recommendations for them to look at. One of them is expanding the PUC from three to five members. And, and I haven't, again, full disclosure, I have not gone to any of their charter commission's meetings, I've read the minutes, talked offline, so I wasn't there, but they took that up, and they voted that down. They got some really good testimony from Patrick Burney, and from the mayor, and from others, and it looked like they had a really good discussion about it. But their, their takeaway was that you, lots of similar state commissions only have three people, and there's so much expertise required to be on the, be on that commission, that it's hard to find people. So, okay, so that's, just set that aside for one second. It looks like, the other thing they're looking at is on the town clerk position. The town clerk is currently appointed by the council. So theoretically, every two years, you could have, you could have a new town clerk. And I think they're looking to make that, take that out of the appointment, make that a hired position, so there's more stability, for the same reason, expertise. So my reaction to that is, you know, I understand, and believe me, being on the council, getting all these packets from, from the utilities, there's definitely a learning curve. I mean, I'm an English ma, I was an English major, I work in insurance, there's a lot to learn. But I'm one of those people, I think you take a reasonably intelligent person with good ethics, you know, I would appoint any town councilor to the PUC, I think they could handle it. And I think what's funny about both positions is that the current process worked. So you have Patrick Burney, who I believe has no background in utilities, I think he's an excellent commissioner. You have Barbara Thompson, who's, by all accounts, an excellent town clerk. Now, I'm new to this, I don't have an encyclopedic knowledge of the history of Wallingford's town clerks, I don't know if there's something in the past that happened, that's why they're doing this, there was some town clerk who wasn't, I've never heard that. So you have the process working. So I guess what I question is, if it's working now, and I guess for the PUC, where I kind of would, would back off my position, is if you're not going to go to five, fine, why don't you have an alternate?
What was the reaction to that?
Well, I haven't, we haven't gotten a report, I haven't said, we haven't gotten a report yet from, that's what I'm, that's where my head is at.
Yeah.
You know, we're going to get a recommendation from that, from that commission, then we'll have a chance, as a council, to, to respond, and, but you're, I think you, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe as the council, we can send the commission back and say, please look at this again, but we can't put something on the ballot ourselves as a council, I don't believe.
I wish you'd asked me that two hours ago.
I'm sorry.
And I could have, and I could have double-checked. I don't think so. I, I tend to agree with you, I think it's got to come from the commission, and, and if it doesn't come from the commission, it doesn't get on.
Right.
But I, but I got to check that.
And let me, let me just, I'm sorry to, you know, I guess, and I guess where I, where I come at this, is you did have a situation with the PUC where you were down one commissioner for a number of months, you had two commissioners. And I, and I think that's not a situation you want to be in. So I would, I would really be a proponent of at least adding an alternate on that, and I would leave the town clerk position alone, because in my mind, if expertise, it just is a very, I know they don't intend it to be this way, but it's a very elitist argument to me, that you need all this expertise. You know, if that's the logic, take it to its logical extreme, then, then have a town manager form of government, if that's where you're going to go. I mean, I don't, and then no one's considering that, no one wants that, so that's kind of...
Is expertise the real reason? That their desire for everyone to have expertise, is that, do you take that at face value?
Hashtag boat rocker. I, yeah, I mean, I mean, I think so. I think I do. I don't, I mean, do you think it's more about...
Let me get to Ralph first.
Yeah, you get to, let's get to Ralph.
Ralph, you're looking at me like I'm not sure what you're going to...
Well, no, I'm just remembering that when I, thirty years ago, when I started at the paper, and I was covering Wallingford, and I did my first story on the Public Utilities Commission, I was told that I probably didn't have the expertise to write about the Public Utilities Commission.
Who told you that?
Well, someone connected to the commission, and I can't imagine, but there's always been this veil of expertise around the PUC. And I just wanted to point that out. Chris himself says that Pat Burney, who has no background in public utilities, is an excellent commissioner. I would be in favor of expanding the commission, I would be in favor of a more diverse, a more diverse membership. It seems like the PUC membership has always been not only close amongst themselves, but very tight with the mayor, close to the mayor. And so I would be in favor of a more diverse membership. And one of the reasons why, Mike, is because the electric division is now embroiled in this, you know, legal battle that has cost more, at least more than a million dollars, and we have no end in sight, and I think that the council was told that this new arrangement with a company that, that helps the town buy power was just a win-win-win-win-win-win. And I'm not saying that there aren't some aspects of it that, that aren't win, but clearly there's legal costs that I don't think the council was aware of, so why not have some additional eyes? Maybe this whole process would have gone differently if you had.
Yeah, so this argument about how you need expertise, otherwise you can't serve if you don't have special expertise on the PUC, that argument.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm not sure then, how, what they do with Bob Beaumont, because I don't think he had any special expertise when he got on. Also, the Board of Ed, for example, very complicated, very technical...
Excellent point, Mike, I was thinking the same thing.
Anyone can run, and they have a huge budget. So you've got the Board of Ed. Planning and zoning commission, very technical, rules of procedure, they, there's no screening process there.
Inland wetlands.
Same thing. So I think this, this expert, this desire for expertise rings hollow, and I think, in my view, I don't give it any weight, I just don't believe that that's what's going on. I think what's going on is, if you, if you expand the power, you have less power.
Oh, yeah.
You know, instead of one-third of the vote, now you only have one-fifth. It also is harder to keep the troops under control. In other words, you don't want anyone straying off the reservation, like sometimes in the council, you know, Craig Fishbein might, you know, sort of strays off where they want him to go. So the more you open it up, there is more risk, you can't control it. And I think that's the issue. The argument that we really can't have alternates, or five instead of three PUC members, because they don't have expertise, I think that should be ignored, and it should go on the merits, you know. Is the PUC stronger with two alternates, or stronger with five members rather than three? But Chris, I'm going to give you the last thought, and then we'll move on.
I'm way off the reservation now. You dragged me off, Mike. I, I don't, yeah, I don't know, I'm not good at figuring out, divining the deeper motivations, but I just, I don't, I reject the expertise argument. Board of Ed's a great example. You do want people like Mike Votto, who's a teacher, he's great, but you have Jay Shea, who's a businessman, who's phenomenal, Mike Bruder, you know, you have people, so yeah, I agree with you on that.
Speaking of the electric division, we have a new rate schedule that is going to be presented soon. I think it was yesterday, and we produce on Wednesdays, but the show broadcast for the first time on, on Thursday, but it was when, on Tuesday, November 1, that the PUC had a meeting, they scheduled a public hearing on new electric rates. Now, these new electric rates is a very significant, from a financial perspective, a very significant move to increase electric rates. In the past, I don't think it's gotten the attention or the oversight as council decisions, or to a lesser extent, Board of Ed decisions, it just doesn't seem to get the publicity, in part because it's often presented as, it's so technical, Ralph, you just can't report on it. Okay? I mean, it's, I mean, I could sit you down for three hours if you want me to explain it, but frankly, I'm not, it's beneath me a little bit, you know, to do that. So, and I think they have their, their public hearings, sometimes on John Street, you know, rather than town council chambers. It's a little stranger territory, and it's not as a viewer, as viewer-friendly, but again, it's a very significant move. I bring this up to remind everybody, including ourselves, that under the current charter, the council has legislative oversight by charter, not quite, no one's quite sure what that means, but it certainly means having the PUC come in and get it into layman's language as to what they're doing and why they're doing, and they also have veto power. I really don't expect the, the council ever to veto the PUC. But it does help from time to time, when the PUC is called in, and they hate this, they hate this when they're called, but it does help the democratic process, if the PUC is called in, and they know someone is watching the store. They just know someone is, you know, is asking the, you know, the questions. So I just wanted to raise our antenna, and we'll follow the story. Chris, your thoughts on that whole...
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think there's a balance as a councilor, you know, I, I, yes, we have oversight, but I mean, I also, we have commissioners, like you said, Mr. Beaumont, Patrick Burney, with Mr. Reinbold, and I, you know, George Adair, so I have faith. And then we have, I have, we have the info, we got it last week, I think the hearing is on December 6th.
Okay.
That's, I talked to George Adair today, and look forward to that. It is complicated.
What is the rate increase, do you know offhand?
I don't know offhand. It, they're looking at the subsidy with, with the commercial versus residential, and spreading it out over three years.
I, do you understand the subsidy?
A little bit, not, not great. I mean, basically, what, the way George explained it, is that over time, this is normal, this has happened in previous municipalities where he served, it gets out of whack, where the residents end up, the, the commercial rates are subsidizing the individual residents' rates, and so they have to adjust for that. And when they tried that this summer, in fact, it was Commissioner Burney who I think told them to go back to the drawing board, because the rate increase on the residents was going to be way too much, and I think the goal was to instead then reduce it by half, instead of all the way, over three years. That's, that's the, as simple as I can...
So Ralph, I'm going to tease you a little bit here, so don't, don't take this next question too seriously. I hope when I read the stories about the rate increase, I never hear or read the word subsidy. Because if I do, I'm going to firmly believe that no one knows, understands what that means, that it is a meaningless term and jargon. And let me just illustrate my point. We have, if I can concoct this on the fly here, we have two electrons sitting out in some, in Canada somewhere, there are two, there are two electrons. One is going to be destined for commercial use, and one is going to be destined for residential use, but they're, they're generated with the same flow of water. And somehow, these two electrons find their way, you know, across transmission lines, you know, you know, closer and closer to Wallingford. And they finally get into the Wallingford system, these two identical electrons, because electrons aren't any different. And they're purchased pretty much in the same batch, the same contract, you know, they're, they're purchased en masse with millions of electrons, they're purchased, and they're just two I'm talking about. But they come into Wallingford side by side, purchased the same way, for basically the same contract price, but, but when one electron finds its way to a commercial property, it's cheaper. Identical electron, and another electron finding its way to a home, it's more expensive, or something close to that. And I can't understand what the word subsidy means in that context.
Right.
But you guys are going to report it.
No, 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 I'm agreeing with you. But I, I think what subsidy becomes is a way for George Adair to say, well, we need to raise residential rates because commercial is, quote, subsidized.
But I don't know what that means. Who knows, who knows what that means?
Right, but it's, I think it implies that, that...
And it's not true.
Right, no, I'm, I'm getting to why, why does it come up? Why is it already up? Why is it discussed? I, I suspect it is because the PUC is trying to make a case that, we just heard out of whack.
Well, the residential electron costs more than the commercial electron?
Right, I mean, right, that, in other words...
I'd like to hear that story.
Somehow, no, I'm not agreeing, that somehow businesses are burdened and homeowners aren't, and then there needs to be some leveling the playfield. I'm not saying I agree with it, I, I'm agreeing with you, I'm saying, these are words that are, that are put out into the public to influence.
Chris, any final thoughts?
Well, yeah, I don't quite get it either, but I do think what they're saying is that it's cheaper for them, for the big business, than it is for the house. They're still running a line to the business, they're still running a line to the house, they're still reading one meter versus the other, but there's more expense, because the house is smaller. That's kind of how it was explained, but...
Well, if that's the case, the, the PUC budget should reflect cost to service homeowners huge, cost to service commercial cheap. That is not a big component of the electricity cost.
Right.
So, I mean, if that's, if that's what they're saying, it's easy enough to explain, I don't think subsidy is the word that, that explains it, but we'll see how it's...
Okay, and I don't want to, but couldn't you make a political argument that, that businesses, well, of course you could make a political argument. I could probably make a successful political argument that businesses should pay more, that, that businesses absorb costs of electricity, they're able to pass those costs on, whereas homeowners, I could make the political case, already burdened by rising property taxes, they're, they're affected by the fact that incomes haven't risen over the last ten years. So I, couldn't, couldn't you make that argument?
No, because they're having a rate study, and it's supposed to be very technically computed, and it's not a...
Well, but you don't think I could get up in front of a, like, I couldn't be on the body of a town council?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, right, and I might be successful with that argument.
Yeah.
So George Adair is saying that, that, that his whole premise in some way, that homeowners owe businesses something, I think you could, you could make a, an argument against.
Yeah, so he says homeowners owe businesses something, and I have a fifty-page rate study to prove it, and you're, and no one's going to be able to understand it, because it's so technical, so that's what I object to.
With the broad strokes that I just made, couldn't you make a case?
I'll vote for you.
Okay, good, thanks.
Absolutely, I'm going to, I'm going to support you. Chris, I want to get, I want to get back to, I want to get back to charter, charter revision for a minute. This override thing, it seems any idea of reducing the amount of council votes needed to override a mayor's veto is dead on arrival. I mean, this was the whole battle in 2009, right from the time, I think it was a member of the public raised that as potential issue, charter revision was doomed, it was demagogued to death, just on that, on that one issue. I can't believe that this charter revision commission would ever seriously consider that.
I think they did, I think they talked about it, and I think they, they voted not to do it. I don't recall, it might have been unanimous. I, I think I saw that in the minutes, I mean...
Is this a close question, or does it deserve a unanimous vote, or is a closer call on that?
I think it's a question in Wallingford, you can't have this discussion in the abstract, you just can't. If you have this discussion, and you say you're for less, fewer vote, six-vote override, it means you're against the mayor. You know, and then, like you said, everything gets, you know, any, so you really, it's hard, it's a hard discussion to have in town. I'm, I'm on the fence on it, you know, part of me looks at other levels of government in, in the Congress, in the State House, you need two-thirds, and yet, at a town council, you need seven out of nine. So I don't get that. On the flip side, though, if you look historically, which I did, since we went to a council, mayor form of government in the early sixties, we have had, and I was baffled, and I was convinced it mostly was a five-four council, we've had a six-three council majority. Now, either side has had a six-three majority, twenty-three out of twenty-eight terms, since we went to that form of government in sixty-one. That's, so, so when you look at it that way, it means that getting six, getting a six-person majority is more routine than I thought it was. So from that perspective, should it, should it be seven? Then I'm kind of back to saying, oh, maybe, maybe it should be. But again, is it a discussion we should have? Yes. And should, and should it sandbag anything else in charter revision? No, it shouldn't, but, but will it? Probably, so...
Spoiler alert.
Spoiler, go ahead.
We're going to have Steve Knight and Christine Tatta on the show in a couple weeks.
Oh, wow.
We're going to talk about charter revision, we're going to go over, we're not going to relitigate, we're not going to relitigate that issue, but we're going to go over, you know, what's, what's been done, what hasn't been done, some of the rationales for some of the specific measures, so it'll be fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, a couple of weeks.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, a couple of weeks. Chris, we haven't talked about, Ralph and I haven't talked about Thurston Foods in a long time. But as I understand what's going on, there has been language, formal, proposed final language, presented to the ordinance committee, the Wallingford Town Council, basically allowing Thurston Foods to make as much noise on their refrigeration units, their generators, as much noise as they want, if this new ordinance is passed. I'm not sure when it's going to be taken up, but we're going to turn to you for just what's coming up, and you know, what's going on.
Yeah, about twenty-four hours from now, it'll be taken up. And there is a proposed ordinance to do that. We did not meet a month ago, because the agenda, we just didn't, we didn't meet the agenda, there's nothing on it, we weren't ready. So this was voted upon at the September ordinance committee, I voted against it.
How come?
I don't believe, I'm troubled that the town hasn't enforced its ordinance against Thurston up till now, and I don't think that it's fair to the neighbors. And I do want to give Thurston special, you know, I think Thurston deserves special treatment. This is not the point in the process where I would give it to them. I think the town needs to step in and help them figure out something to help block this noise. You know, there's been talk of a wall, which they don't want to do, they say it's too expensive. But I'm not convinced they've done a lot of research into a wall either. But I'm just, you know, you go, and you know this from being on council, you're around town, and people kind of talk to you at the grocery store. And the two arguments I've heard on this, most of the town people I've talked to are for Thurston. And the arguments I've heard are, number one, those neighbors should have known better. And I think that's ridiculous. The neighbors should not have known, they didn't live near the train tracks, near the airport, like where I live. Should have done their home inspection at three in the morning, that's what they should have done? I mean, that's crazy. And number two, I've heard Thurston pays a lot of taxes, and look at all the contributions they make to the town. No disagreement, but as a councilor, I'm not looking, that's not part of my equation. If I start looking at things that way, then I shouldn't be a councilor. So, I'm not voting for this. I didn't vote for it, and I will not vote for it, but I think it'll pass, at the end of the day.
Lopsided vote?
I think Joe Marone is not voting for, I don't want to speak for anyone, but he and I voted against it last time. Probably, probably lopsided.
We're running out of time, but I wanted to get just a little bit into the national election. We really haven't talked too much about it on this show. And the reason why is that the national press is sort of, you know, covering it. Washington Post, New York Times, editorials in the Record Journal, in the Hartford Current, and so on and so forth. It seems clear that the Republican Party is in angst over the ascendancy of Donald Trump, and the spirit, or mean-spiritedness of his campaign, depending on how you look at it. You know, because there's obviously different perspectives. But there seems to be a dividing, a moment of truth for the Republican Party, maybe a division in it. Bernie Sanders raises the same sort of moment of truth for the Democratic side, and I think there's going to be another shoe to drop, you know, on that later, but right now, I just want to talk about Donald. Chris, what's your position, if you want to share it with us, on the national election and Donald Trump?
I thought we were discussing the surplus, but okay, we'll discuss this.
No, folks, he knew this was coming, I promise.
I'm not voting for Donald Trump. I, and I'm not, look, I know there's a lot of people who are dissatisfied with the country with the last eight years, frankly, with the second half of Bush's administration, a lot of Republicans. I get that, I'm not dismissing anyone voting for Trump, I understand that. Personally, I can't do it. I can give you a couple of reasons. Number one, he's not a conservative, I don't believe him. I just struggle to vote for Mitt Romney. Mitt Romney is a decent human being. You know, Mitt Romney is someone you could at least, even if you don't like him, you could picture him being president. And I had to really, it took me a long time, because I wasn't trusting of his conservative credentials, based on his record. If I had trouble with Mitt Romney, I certainly have trouble with Donald Trump. Hillary Clinton in the first debate talked about, what did she say? I think it was the first question, trickle-down economics, tax cuts caused the 2008 financial crisis. To use your favorite expression, that's poppycock. No credible economist thinks tax cuts caused the financial crisis. Trump, though, doesn't articulate that. Trump goes on and on about his own, whatever else he's going on about, he's not conservative. Another, just one other quick example for you, why I won't vote for him, on foreign policy. You know, the two of them are competing on who they can blame, how much more they can blame Bush. If going into Iraq in 2003 was the biggest blunder of the last twenty-five years in foreign policy, which it might be, Obama's decision in '11, and his inability to negotiate a status of forces agreement, was the second biggest blunder. But Donald Trump isn't even talking about that. He's just saying, yes, Bush, you know, I wasn't in support of the war, Bush lied. So he's just, he's not conservative. And, you know, when he makes fun of handicapped people, personally, I have an issue with that, my mom was handicapped. And his rhetoric is just ghastly toward women. I mean, that's stuff we've, you know, we've covered before, but I'll probably vote third party. Evan McMullin is running out in Utah, he's a write-in candidate, I might write him in.
It didn't throw your vote away. I mean, he didn't have a chance, I mean...
He could win Utah.
He could win Utah.
And if either one gets to 270, it goes to the house.
But the realistic choice is Trump or Hillary. I mean, I don't understand the third-party rationale for him voting for a third-party candidacy, except to evade or avoid the difficult choice. Some people believe voters, people don't have a duty to vote, I disagree with that. But isn't that just throwing your vote away? Don't you have to go into the booth and bite your tongue and go one way or the other?
I don't think that, no. I mean, I'm not voting for her, because I don't agree with her on anything. And I'm certainly not voting for him. I am going to vote, I'll vote for Craig Fishbein. Twice, I'll vote twice, no voter fraud, but I'll vote twice for Craig.
So just on this status of forces thing, because it was mentioned, George W. Bush had the first opportunity to sign a status of forces agreement. George W. Bush could not, and it was George W. Bush's agreement that he signed that led to the American exodus out of Iraq. Status of forces agreement is, hey, if we stay in country, if we stay in Iraq, if our forces stay in Iraq, are you going to sue our soldiers, are you going to sue the US government for civilian deaths, for the collateral damage of war? And a status of forces agreement is, no, the home country will not sue US troops. George W. Bush couldn't get that done. The conservative view is Obama had another chance to do it, and failed to do it. The other side is Obama didn't have a chance to do it, and the realistic best-last chance was George W. Bush, and that's the divide, and I...
But the New York Times did report on this, Obama did not want to do it. And we have soldiers in Germany to this day, we have soldiers in Italy, we have soldiers in South Korea. We have soldiers, ten thousand troops, Obama had no interest in doing it, he could have negotiated it. I think he did, we can just agree to disagree.
Yeah, well, that's the other perspective, yeah, yeah, that's the other perspective. I think we are, well, we got a couple of minutes, so maybe I can just squeeze this in. There was a very recent column by David Brooks in the New York Times. David Brooks is a conservative, I think a conservative is conservative.
Air quote time, conservative.
Yeah, I mean, he's the old-guard conservative, and he wrote this, I'm going to try to squeeze it in in about two minutes. He's from the Buckley era, when the image of the Republican Party was sort of like a business-like, sort of counting the bean kind of a thing. "The Buckley-era establishment self-confidently enforced intellectual and moral standards," David Brooks writes. "It rebuffed the nativists like the John Birch Society, and the old-time conservatives objected if there was any anti-Semitism, or, you know, anything like that." But there were three reasons, he says, why the conservative movement is now dead. First, talk radio and cable TV. Skipping a bit, he says, "In search of that mass right-wing audience that Rush Limbaugh and those guys have, this Ann Coulter, for example, enjoys it. Conservatism have done its best to make itself offensive, offensive to people who value education and disdain made-for-TV rage." The second reason why David Brooks thinks the old-conservative party is on the ropes, he says, "Conservative opinion-masters begin to value politics over everything else. Among social conservatives, for example, faith sometimes seems to come in second behind politics." Didn't used to be that way, but he's saying it might be now. "Today, most white evangelicals are willing to put aside, willing to put aside, the Christian virtues of humility, charity, and grace, for the sake of a Trump political victory." According to a Public Religion Research Institute survey, seventy-two percent of white evangelicals believe that a person who is immoral in private life can be an effective national leader, a belief that is more Machiavelli than Matthew. And then, the third big change is this anti-government rhetoric, that government has no role in solving any problems. And so you have gridlock, government is the problem, not the solution. Chris, thanks for coming on the show, we have run out of time. Good luck, you know, with the fall and your spring agenda on that Thurston Foods things. We appreciate your coming in. Thanks, everyone, for watching, we appreciate it. We produce these shows on Wednesday, you got to see it Thursday at nine o'clock, if that doesn't work. Fridays at 6:30, and by then, over the weekend, it's probably on the WPAA website, wpaa.tv. There's a video-on-demand button, click that, and if not that, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday's at night, at night. And if it's night at night, it's Citizen Mike. Good night.